Welcome everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled Floyd County Board of Education meeting at Prestonburg High School, May 20th, 2019, 6:30. I'd like to throw a call to show that all school board members are present. The goals of the Floyd County Board of Education is to be a five-star school, transition rate of eighty percent, to remain consistently solvent and efficient, to have an average ACT of nineteen point five, and the attendance to be ninety-five point five or above. I'd like to remind everyone that if anybody wishes to address the board, there is a clipboard on the table here, you must sign it, and please include your address and phone number where you can be reached. Our policy, not policy, but practices, that we give you five minutes to address the board, and if there's anything that we need to respond to, we will do so within five days in writing. Next is, I'd like to take a moment of individual silence for the reflection of why we are here. Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Atkins?
There was a name, when you're dealing with insurance carriers, it was an entire school system, I guess you would say the company deals that out to several different companies, and there was a name left off, so the original agenda, so it was being added and replaced, okay, okay. We have, I'm saying to you, we have a copy of it for you, that way you can add it to it.
I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Do you want to make the motion? I need a second.
I said the firework coming, did it come in now or later?
Later. Any opposed? Motion passed. The agenda is approved. Next would be spotlight on student, staff, and community achievements, and looks like we have a lot of students and personnel to recognize tonight, and a lot of good things going on in Floyd County.
I do want to say that it's good to see everybody here supporting kids. I would rather come in here and recognize a hundred kids every night, instead of, you know, a hundred dollars, because that's what we're here for, these kids. Plus, kids are more fun than all the rest of them.
Are you refreshed still?
Yes. Well, tonight, we're gonna start off just a little bit differently, and the reason being is that I've recognized these ladies so many times, and they are always at the end of our list, so tonight, we wanted them to be first, as they are the ones who meet our kids, a lot of our kids, at the very beginning. In the Head Start Regional Office, they conduct their annual record review of every classroom, and the goal is to meet the needs of the children and the families, so that kids will be ready for school and ready to be successful. And it's a very in-depth process, and the, what is even more difficult about it is, there's not just one person working on this. You have the teacher, the teacher's assistant, the family advocate, the consultant, the educational consultant, and the special educational consultant. So there is a lot of hard work, teamwork, dedication that go into this. The regional office recognizes the top twenty-two classrooms out of sixty-three, and eight of these twenty-two are ours. Starting off, we have two teams, classroom teams, that tied for first place. From Dove Allen Central Elementary, Misty Howe, Stacy Page, Rhonda Newman, Em Grubb, Theresa Newsom, and Leanne Manns made up the first team. And by the way, this is Rhonda Newman's third consecutive year, and Stacy's second consecutive year.
Thank you.
Also tied for first, from Allen Elementary, Jessica Kaiser, Hallie Yates, Jennifer Woods, Em Grubb, Theresa Newsom, and Andrea Bailey. This is Jennifer's sixth consecutive year, and Jessica's fifth consecutive year. Not only did we have two teams tied for first place, we had two teams tied for second place as well. From Allen Elementary, Mary Bentley, Jessica Pardon, Jennifer Woods, Em Grubb, Theresa Newsom, and Megan DeCoutts. Our other team that tied for second place is from May Valley Elementary. This team is Ashley Fox, Shawna Hall, Rhonda Newman, Em Grubb, Theresa Newsom, and Delana Watts. This is Ashley's third year being recognized in a row, and Shawna's second. So in following the pattern, we also had two teams tied for third place. From the other team from May Valley is Rhonda Begley, Beth Martin, Rhonda Newman, Em Grubb, and Theresa Newsom. This is Rhonda Begley and Beth Martin's third consecutive year. Our other team that tied for first is from John M. Stumbo Elementary, Deborah Tackett, Amanda Sturgill, Jill Johnson, Em Grubb, Candy Hall, Samantha Tackett, and Theresa Newsom. And unfortunately, this is Deb Tackett's last time with us, because she is retiring. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. It's Debbie Gibson that's retiring. That's what I get for improv, isn't it? The team that ranked sixth out of sixty-three is from South Floyd Elementary, and Candy Earhart, Nancy Daniels, Beverly Bush, Em Grubb, and Theresa Newsom. And as we're making our way up here, let me just say that the posts on our Facebook page that always get the most likes or comments are the ladies in the store. And eighth place in the region from Prestonburg Elementary, Brittany Maynor, Amanda Calhoun, Theresa Campbell, Em Grubb, Melanie Allen, and Theresa Newsom. And this is Theresa Campbell's third consecutive year. And next, if you go with the average, that we attend school a hundred and seventy days a year, if a kid goes every day, kindergarten through twelfth grade, that means that they've been in school two thousand two hundred and ten days, or almost fourteen thousand hours. And these next two students did that. We have a special thanks to our regional DDP cadre, they have a five hundred dollar annual scholarship. The bad part about this is they divide it amongst the kids, and there are five students this year, so each student in the region is wanted to get a hundred dollars. We also want to thank Walmart, Mount Mark Center, Pigeon Pope, and Community Trust Bank for gift cards and gift certificates, and our board member, Dr. Chandler, for her donation to these students of a hundred dollars. From Betsy Lane High School, Mr. Jonathan Hall. And from Prestonburg High School, Austin Blankenship. We did a photo with both of you. And I have to tell this too, four years ago, we recognized Austin's brother, David. He also has perfect attendance, so Mrs. Blankenship, we need you on an attendance committee, please. Moving right along. In eighth grade, students can apply for Rogers Explorer Program, and it's a three-day experience at one of six Kentucky colleges or universities. The students are engaged in educational and fun activities as they work on math, science, and technology skills, and leadership skills. This year, we had six. Normally, you have two per county, and then the next one hundred and twenty top kids go. So for us to have six is pretty amazing, and so out of a forty-five county area. We'll begin with Adams Middle School students, Reese Hamilton and Chloe Reynolds. From Dove Allen Central Elementary, Alex Begley and Haley Ken Little. And from South Floyd Elementary, Jada Johnson and Jayla Little. Now we want to recognize some Science Olympiad. The Science Olympiad competition is like a team of fifteen students, and they compete in a variety of events, and each event requires different skills. Each year, some of the events change, and you both will changes in the different fields of science, so teamwork is crucial, and students have to be actively participating. Now, first, I want to mention that they're not here tonight, they had some previous engagements. The high school regional runner-up was Betsy Lane High School, and Coach Pascarella. But tonight, we do have the regional middle school Science Olympiad champion, and that is Allen Elementary, and Coach Tiffany Lee. Next in athletics, this team competed with one hundred and sixty teams, and they won. The 2019 Bass Pro Shops, I believe Flywheel High School, fishing, as the Lake Cumberland opened, and disqualified them for the national high school championship, and Alabama. From Boyd Central High School, the team is Zach Rose and Cameron Fryder. Next up, we have our state SDLP winner. These first group of students we have, they apply to be selected from around Kentucky to serve on the media arts team. First up, from Dove Allen Central Elementary, she was a member of the blogger corps, Madison Lawson. Also from Dove Allen Central Elementary, this young lady was a member of the media arts team, Haley B. Little. And this next young man, we've already recognized once, he was a member of the live production team from Adams Middle School, Mr. Reese Hamilton. Also from state SDLP, these are some of the 2019 Digital Project Champions. First in game design, from Dove Allen Central Elementary, Brody Boggs, Grant Hall, and Grant Rock. This next young man was first in documentaries, and also first in feature video, Mr. Todd Fryder from Dove Allen Central Elementary. Next up, from, also from Dove Allen Central Elementary, this young lady was second place in the state in original photo, Alexa Morris. And this next young lady, also from Dove Allen Central Elementary, was first in technical riding, and first in on-the-band fogo, Miss LaThea Quinn. Now we have a team, this team's project was created simply to save lives. This device reminds parents that the children are still buckled in the car seat, and alarm will sound when the car's temperature gets too hot or too cold, and it can even notify parents on their phone, once they get more than ten feet away from the car. As a result of their performance at state, the team is going to travel in June to Philadelphia for their national presentation and competition. So we want to recognize the middle school state SDLP champions, Allen Elementary's Forget Me Not Team, and Coach Montell. And this is also their second state title. Underneath, for the people from the chamber, please come forward. I believe Kathy and Misha are here. And if you are a senior at Betsy Lane High School, and you are here for the work ethic program, will you please come forward and come to the, where the board members are standing? So tonight, the Floyd County Chamber of Commerce would like to recognize several of our seniors, there's actually eighty-five, although not all are here tonight, that participated and completed the Chamber's Work Ethic Awards Program. This program is designed to help students transition to adult life. Upon completion, the Chamber hopes that the students have habits that they will carry within the rest of their lives. The Chamber of Commerce believes there is a direct relationship between work ethic that a young person displays in school and their future success. By striving to instill a positive work ethic in our students, we hope to ensure that their future as responsible, productive members of society and our community occur. To be awarded the Work Ethic Award, the student must have demonstrated and fulfilled the requirements in nonstandards. And those standards are attendance, punctuality, discipline, achievement, community service, work ethic, dependability, respectfulness, and cooperation. Tonight, we are proud to be recognizing eighty-five students who completed the program. They will receive a medallion, and they can wear a graduation, and in addition, we're gonna have three scholarships, each for two, each for two hundred and fifty dollars, and every student who completed the Work Ethic Program was eligible for the scholarship. Now, I'm gonna call off everybody's names, but when I call yours in particular, you'll step forward. From Betsy Lane High School, these are the ones we have. Nathan Ankers, Ashley Allen, Brian Adams, Christopher Atkins, Samuel Bell, Kitana Bentley, Maggie Bentley, Zachary Bentley, Callie Campbell, Caitlin Tarleton, Deandra Castle, Alexis Collins, Caitlin Collins, Andrea Conley, Anna Marie Cook, Casey Hall, Jonathan Hall, Hannah Hall, Matayla Grace Hall, Dalton Harris, Cassandra How, Hannah Hamilton, Cameron Hughes, Megan Hughes, Noah Deeply, Chelsea Hendricks, Nathaniel Kidd, Jacob Hertz, Thomas Maynor, Thomas McNeil, Nathaniel Mims, Henry Newman, Evan Newsom, Ethan Rowe, Jordan Sloan, Caitlin Spears, Haley Spencer, Lorna Swager, and Frank Tackett, were the ones from Betsy Lane High School. And the winner of the scholarship from Betsy Lane High School was not here tonight, but it was Anna Marie Cook. So if anybody back there has jobs available this summer, they should agree to the card. And now we have the seniors from Boyd Central High School, if you are a senior here tonight from Boyd Central for the Work Ethic Program, please come forward. Again, I'm gonna call all names off, but if you will please step forward when I call your name. From Boyd Central, we have Josh Artrich, Lindsey Banks, Haley Blevins, Parker Collins, Ethan Fryder, Cole DeRossis, Connor Dennis, Seth Dennis, Haley Edwards, Alexis Hall, Michael Lynn Paul, Haley Hancock, Dakota Henshu, Lana Hicks, Emily Howard, Jacob Johnson, Joan Johnson, Depanga Johnson, Elaine Kidd, Natalie Lester, Brianna Little, Chris Manns, Jacob Morris, Josh Mullins, Madison Mullins, Haley Newman, Mahala Owen, Brian Paxton, Lauren Preston, Jessam Reed, Cameron Ritchie, Alex Hammond, Christian Spartman, Janice Frizz, Gabe Tackett, Gracie Thompson, Scott Thompson, and Casey Tussin. Now, if you'll let me get a picture real quick. I'm sorry, you don't want it. And the winner of that scholarship was Mr. Scott Thompson. And the winner of that scholarship was Mr. Scott Thompson. From Prestonburg High School, if you are here for the Work Ethic, please come forward. From Prestonburg High School, we have Caitlin Goebbels, Joshua Hall. I believe that is Joshua Hall, is it? Okay. Caleb Johnson, Barbara Morrison, McKinley Smith, Matayla Sloan, Hannah Thornsberry, and Emily West. And the winner of this scholarship was Caitlin Goebbels. Yeah, we're down? All right, I think it's cleared out now that we can continue. I'd like to say congratulations to all of the employees for Head Start and to all the students that we recognized tonight. I think all of those recognitions just goes to show all of the good things that we have going on in Floyd County. All the positive things that we have going on. Okay, next up, we will have a report on student works by Prestonburg High School principal and Scott Bates Nelson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A little war wiggle room in here right now.
Just a little bit.
There, we have a picture of our seniors and a great bunch of kids. And I'll be happy to see them go. But as they go, we'll be getting ready for the next one. All right, some basic demographics. We're looking at 480 students. Attendance rate is actually a little higher than that, 94.41. Free lunch rate is 57. And our second mean population was 80.10. A little bit of time to relax for the time we started this presentation today. Some things that we're working on. We want all of our students to become self-citizens. So as we go through the slideshow, there are two slides where we look at how we're bridging the gap and working more with our community and our community partners so that our students have better opportunities. Our goal here is to increase opportunities for all students. Some of the ways that we helped them and hopefully have generated for post-secondary opportunities, RTO, enrichment class periods. We also have co-teaching in English in our math classes, after-school tutoring, and incorporating ACT strategies. And we use the ACT towards prep and using those strategies in the classroom. One of the things that our administrative team began working on last year and is full success with this year was Advanced Kentucky Grant. And we were able to secure $55,000 to help implement AP courses for our students. This year, we were able to offer three or four AP courses. We're looking at adding six next year. And within the next three years, being able to offer 10 to 12 AP courses. So this is something that we're really excited about. And opportunities, I will allow Mr. Tackett to pick that slide.
Ms. Brinkin talked about bridging the gap between our community partners. And those are the opportunities that we're providing. She discussed AP courses. Also, the addition of Advanced Kentucky, adding more advanced placement courses. That way, we give more students more opportunities here at Prestonburg High School. School service projects, building those relationships with our community partners, including our mid-coreship program, extracurricular activities, our athletes volunteer, teen outreach, which is provided by the health department. They come on Wednesdays and do community service projects with our freshmen. We do those in our English classrooms on Wednesdays. Career Day, we have finished our second Career Day, Second Annual Career Day. We had one last year and one this year. And we were able to book careers in every classroom that we have teachers this year. And we've already set a date for next year. We do it in March. And we allow our students to pick four to five careers and they get to spend 25 minutes in the classroom learning about different careers, whether it's college readiness, career readiness, all types of fields, hairdressing, welders, auto mechanics, lawyers, doctors, et cetera. Don't want to leave anyone out, but it's a lot to name. Community cleanup. We work with our extracurricular activities, our athletes, to get out in the community and work with that. College career health fairs, which include blood drives. Ms. Watson does a great job with that. Sources of strength is provided by the Mountain Comprehensive Care Center. We work with Mr. Jacobs on sources of strength. And we provide that in our advisor-revising plan. The next one, we talk about the awareness games. I've got to give a shout out to our girls' basketball coach, Mr. Brandon Kea. We do several awareness games throughout the season. Basketball, cerebral palsy, autism awareness. We try to provide those opportunities to make the community aware of those events. Also, the last opportunity that we have on our slide is provided by our social studies department, Kentucky Youth Association, and Kentucky United Nations Association. We had students travel to Louisville. Also, we had a student from Floyd Central go with our students to Kuna. And it was a great opportunity. And here are some pictures. The blood drive, we done two this year. KYA in Kuna, teen outreach, and Career Day. Those are just a few of the photos of our community outreach program.
Again, making sure that our seniors, when they leave us, are ready for whatever post-secondary option that they're willing to pursue. We're real excited about our career pathways. We offer six different career pathways. One that we've seen successfully the last couple of years, which is our newest career pathway, and that is school botany. So we've been real excited about that. We have several students who passed those. And we'll be celebrating them on Wednesday during our awards ceremony. Also, student spotlight, again, trying to highlight our students. We do that through social media with our student spotlight. We have freshman sophomore students and seniors that we highlight throughout the year. Heavy focus on the ACT, because we all know how important ACT is for post-secondary options also. All of our juniors took it. This year, we were afforded the opportunity to be able to have our sophomores take it also. The sophomore can pass it with a 17.5. So that's pretty exciting because our junior can pass it with 18. So we're excited to see how we can help those students raise those scores for next year. We have students that have, junior students that actually initiated a summer program that we will offer a STEM camp here at the high school for our middle school students, both Adams and Allen Elementary, for them to be able to come up here this summer. And so our students have put together coordinated a two-week summer camp camp. So we're really excited about that. Again, one of the things that we're always doing though is looking at the data and how we can use RTO and after-school tutoring options to help grow our students. Graduation rate is sitting at 96%. One of the other things we're real excited about is a program called Reading Plus. And Reading Plus is more similar to ACT, reading passages than what we used in the past, which was STAR and the AR program. Reading Plus focuses on increasing vocabulary, increasing reading speed, and reading comprehension. So we're excited about that and how that will help with our students in the future. That's it. We wouldn't like that initially. Good luck with this one, Mr. Allen.
Some of our achievements throughout the year. Special Olympics, we had McKenna Shepherd win three golds and a silver medal. KWL A State Showcase, we had first place with Tessa Jarrett from Dalton Powers. I think Tessa had a drawing and Dalton had a sculpture. And through some of the monies we spent this year, we've added some TVs throughout the building. And these TVs broadcast student achievements, announcements, and so on. If you stand around and look at it long enough, you will see their pictures with no drawing and sculpture. Aldish Van, Brian Actuda, and eighteen all county scores. The HOBE representative was Abby Bowe. Written composition, State Bound, Tabitha Mitchell. Congressional App Challenge winners for how many years in a row? Five years in a row. Bobby Fisher, Nathaniel Pranut, and Sam Carroll. And that's Dr. Shannon. Three regional science fair winners. Bass Fisherman State, we had Brian Bean and Garrett Country qualify. SDLP, our state qualifiers, was Dalton Bentley, Morgan Spears, John Rose, Jonah Tackett, Isaac Goebbels. And Science Olivia was also a state qualifier. Archery, you say it's black cat dominance in archery. I don't know how many years in a row Coach Shawn Holliday has won a regional, I think it's nine or 10. So he's done a great job there. They placed ninth in state competition. We have three wrestlers qualified. Sam Curry, Carter Ankers, and Bruce Hamilton. Sam's a junior, Carter's a freshman, Bruce is in eighth grade. So we've got heavens above him. High School Heisman year was Bruce Endicott. Girls and boys soccer, already regional winners. Dance cats were KECO state champs, and Jazz and Palm, Dance Fest, national champions. We had seven all county fan members. I'm going to need you to see some of the pictures for our individuals.
One of the things I wanted to highlight real quick, $100 seems to be the target money, attention getter for students. So part of that Advanced Kentucky Grant is that students who get a qualifying score will receive a $100 check. $100 is a big deal to students. At the start of the year, Dr. Baria came to school and we were talking about what she could do to help with our students and our student athletes. Because we have, we offer more athletic programs than most other schools. And so we have a high number of students involved in athletics. So one of the things that Dr. Baria offered to do was to pay each student who had 4.0 GPA, $100. They had to have good attendance. They also had to take good care of their bodies and not be involved in bathing, as some students out there in the world might be. And so, of course, grades will keep there. And our district has that policy. You know, we've got to be here the day before and the day of games. And that's, there's a strong correlation with athletics and athletics. And you need success, that self-discipline and all of that motivation to be successful in both of those. So on Thursday, on the 22nd?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday. At our awards ceremony, Dr. Baria will be presenting 31 of our students with $100 checks. So thank you very, very much. I look to see you all when you get there. Any questions?
I have one question. See, when I run, when I give some money, you know, I always lose. So I discussed with the kids. And I told them, your game, academics is very important. But academics is more important in the future. And then I discussed with them, if they get a 4.0 GPA. Excellent. Perfect attendance. No fighting, no smoking, and no T.K. weather, 18 years old. And I expected maybe four, five, or six kids will get that money, $100. And I even talked with my family. I asked lots of people. Nobody told me more than 10 students will get 4.0 GPA excellence. And now she gave me a number, I thought she was going to bankrupt me. Because there are 26 kids. Getting 4.26. And they are getting perfect excellence. Oh, everything else, 4.0 GPA excellence. That's unbelievable. I don't believe it.
I promise, it's true. And we're very thankful for that, our students for it. And again, you announced that and kids know that at any time, students who, they might send in a little extra and $100 is a big motivator. So thank you very much.
Just real quick, I had a few things. The mentorship program, you all were personally in the county. Just this year, I think we've had a lady hired by, was it the, the employment officer there?
The employment.
Yeah, she fell into that.
The co-op.
Yes, the co-op, and the mentorship. And as she tested to see where they would place her, she actually tested high note. She's making like $14 an hour.
Right. And this is something, this is a career for her in the conversations with her, this is a career path. I mean, she, this is not just a job for her, this is a career for her.
That goes back to the love city. I made a statement in the paper the other day that you are educated for opportunities. And you guys are pretty good.
Opportunities, that's good. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? I'd just like to say great job. Continue doing what you're doing. Thank you all for your support.
So we move on to number three, twenty comments to the Board of Education. And first up is Angela Coleman for the FCEA.
Welcome. This evening, we'd like to start with the FCEA scholarships. And to give everyone a little bit of background, the Ford County Education Association offers scholarships. They have FCEA members with the House of College for education for the children. The scholarship is worth $1,000 per year. Divided into two separate $500 amounts. It will be made to pay one to the student beginning of the semester for their freshman year. And these four students will receive the first $500 check tonight. This year, we chose to give out four scholarships instead of our usual three. These are sweaters of work in a particular order. And I have my lovely gift present, which I have worked in our treasure value market to help give these out. From Prestonburg High School, this Emily Way. From Prestonburg High School is Emily West. From Floyd Central, Cole DeRose. Also from Floyd Central, Gabe Taggitt. And from Bessie Lane High School, Samuel Isaac Bell.
That was your money, Ben. I'm sure you have the money.
So staying with positive news, our May Day meeting, our May meeting, we have a teaching president from Bessie Lane Elementary, Bessie Lane High School, Sapporo Elementary, Daze, Prestonburg Elementary, and RL State. And we hope to see everyone there. We'd love for all your discounts, for Dana Agnes from Schedule Lials, and everyone and anyone in this room to please attend. It's the third Wednesday of each month, 4:30 KDA Office. We have our summer food drive underway. We're a little bit late because it started this year. The email's out, the off-personnel, two items for every school. In FCEA, we've had some lively discussions about the scholarship and about the election process of FCEA officers. And we've decided to do some self-reflection and move forward in a positive direction. That's what I've told the members that come to the regular meetings most of the time, where all of us, the school goes out to relax, self-reflection, move forward positively. Officers re-elected for this year, you're second to me again as president, sorry. Patricia McWhorter again as vice president, Beverly Martin treasurer, and Carol Bentley secretary for the four officers again. And last but not least, I know you're working on it, I feel it with those. Boy teachers deserve a raise. They are hard-working teachers, we deserve a raise. And I know you're working on it. Make it happen, make it happen. All right, thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Let's call down later here, you have, it sounds like you have a moderate participation in your meetings and that's, that's a big part of it.
Next is Mary. Five minutes left, five minutes left. And the time starts now.
Okay, I just really wanted to apprise everyone of a wonderful opportunity that will be offered at Floyd Central High School on June 17. Now, there's no paperwork yet because it has just now kind of crystallized into an actual event, but through our partnership with Narrative Four, there is an author named Rob Spillman, whose grandfather is actually from Kentucky. And he has, he's also the co-creator of Literary Magazine. And he had this just off-the-wall amazing idea to start a, to literally bring books to underserved areas. So he and his friends have taken basically an 18-wheeler, converted it into a bookmobile, and they're traveling from Newark City all the way down to New Orleans for the International Summit for Narrative Four, which will happen on June 21st. And they are making a stop here in Floyd County on the 17th. And so what we decided to do at Floyd Central is to have a one-day writer's workshop of bookmobile, the books are free, people can come, they can get free books, we want to have a community dinner, and we're going to be inviting all of the high schools and the middle schools and even down to the elementary. If they would like to bring, we're going to do some storytelling, we're going to have a writer's workshop. And it should be a very interesting, pretty much an amazing experience that will be free to everyone. And I just wanted to let that be known to the board and also to all of those who remain behind.
Please make sure the team has that so we can get that out on our social media pages as well.
It is, the first stop was actually the Bronx. And the books they gave away were from international bestselling authors, Colin McCann, who wrote with the Great World Spin and won the National Book Award, and also from Ishmael Baya, who wrote a memoir called Long Way Gone. He was a child soldier in Sierra Leone. And they were both with us throughout our Bronx version, or the Bronx section of the Regional Field Exchange, and all the kids got their books for free. And they were autographed by both of those authors. So it was a pretty amazing experience. So thank you all. And that was way less than five minutes.
Two minutes and 30 seconds.
Well, what is the, sometimes it's y'all's fault for asking me questions, though. Thank you all.
Okay, that's everybody that has signed up. Anybody else wishing to address the board? Students, parents, PTO, side-based council, certified or certified employees, principals, members of Board of Education? Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to number four. Receive attendance and plans enrollment and health aid service report. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Harris since she's still not? You have a question, Dr. Chandler?
I have a few questions here, so let me just wait.
Is it on the, is it on the attendance or the health aid service report? Is it regarding that? Okay. I need a motion to receive a report on 4A.
I make the motion.
I need a second. Linda, second. Any opposed? Motion passed. Receive athletic academic attendance report. Does anybody have any questions regarding the athletic academic attendance report? I need a motion to receive the athletic academic attendance report. Linda makes the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Any opposed? Report is received, 5A. Receive report of the student attendance. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Atkins regarding this report?
Real quick, I want to throw out there that we are working with a new AED company. So we'll have those in our facilities. As a program that we'll move forward with, they will actually maintain the AEDs, they will provide the medical professional with support. This is, these AEDs are, I guess we'd say, maintained monthly by the company. So to me, it's a win-win. We have several things we're working on again. Tonight, we will approve the vendor for the STEM bus. And I'll say it again, we are the only one east of the middle of Lexington, so we're really excited about that. We've got a lot of great things going on in Ford County schools, and I'm excited to be a part of it.
And I'd like to say that I think the AEDs are something that has been necessary for years, just not for student athletes, but during functions and gyms, it's just good to have on hand because you never know when the emergency will arise that you need one.
And actually, at the high schools, we'll have one at the school and one at the field. So we will have those where they can, they can be retrieved quickly.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments? I need a motion to receive the report of student attendance.
I make the motion.
Motion by, wait, go, second by Chandler, any opposed? Motion passed. Next is action by consent. I know that Dr. Chandler has a few that she likes to discuss. Could you read those off to me? Dr. Chandler, you said 6E.
6E, H, O, Y, N, K, K.
Does anybody have, have anything else that they want people to discuss? So we can mark it. Junior, you good? All right, then first for Dr. Chandler is 6E, consider an approved retro active approval for Read to Achieve contract 2019-2020 for the following schools, Bessie Lane Elementary, May Valley Elementary, Sapporo Elementary, and Prestonburg Elementary. Dr. Chandler, what questions do you have regarding this Read to Achieve contract?
I have a few questions and before I share about that, I have some comment about the agenda. And I read before a secondary question. First, the agenda is too big. I think what we need to do, either we cut down something. Second thing, there is a agenda, the way is presentation. We did different there before, now there is a agenda. There is a something here, like a fundraising. Then second one is comes like education. Then third one comes like transportation, keys to go somewhere, senior trips. So it's so confusing that there are 600 pages. When you read 600 pages, it takes so much time. And I know it is our duty as a board member to read every line. So when you go agenda, like clear agenda. If we go and discuss everything important here, we will be here of confusion. So in there we need to agenda, like support, there is a fundraising. We should have first, then one, two, three, four, five. There we should have a trip, one, two, three, four, five. And then we have education, there are something important, everything is important. But this is the most important thing, and we need to read every line. Sometimes.
Sergeant Chandler?
Sometimes, just a minute, sometimes you have to read like three, four times, beg and forth, because sometimes you don't understand, you have to go beg and forth. So I think agenda, we need to do something about the agenda, other things. And then the agenda comes. The agenda comes last 24 hours. It's sometimes is so important, if someone has tried to understand, read, and I know I try to read every line, and sometimes it's so difficult to do it. And this time, I'm very happy when I read it. Here comes like E, everyone, the leading, there are education.
Yes, what questions do you have regarding E?
After suddenly comes F, everyone, it's a very difficult to work with fundraising. Then again comes.
Dr. Chandler? We, we need to discuss the ones that you have pulled. When we ask if the board members have any comments that they want to make, then that's when you need to discuss that you want to change the format of the agenda. Right now, we're on number 6E, and we need to know what questions you have regarding 6E.
I'm sorry, but this is the time I need to take. Okay.
No, 6E is what we're discussing now.
Now let's go for the E. There is a E, we consider approve, require to approve the contract for reading line. Middle, Bessie Lane Elementary, Mary Lee, South Floyd, and Tessa Lee. There are seven months of only 44,000 dollars. But when I read that, there is a so big difference in the salaries. Bessie Lane, one has only 21,000 salary, one school is 44,000 salary, and South Floyd school has no other benefit except 27,000 so salary. So all money goes to this time. Bessie Lane has insurance and they have 5,500 magazines for the insurance. So I have no idea, if all the money go for the teacher, how come they will never supply those moves and all other things?
Okay. So principals already buy the materials, they would rather take this grant and put staff in places. That's what they do with their money, they put staff in place because materials are already available.
This is vacant program.
It is, it is. Yes, it's a great program, it is.
Okay.
Again, it allows our schools to put an extra person in there that helps with reading. So it's a relative.
Okay, the next letter that you wanted pulled was consider approve accepting the second SFCC, this will be your 2019 KETS offer assistance in the amount of $25,706. What questions do you have regarding that?
I have a question about that. What they, this is a vacant program also, the money may be very good. I just want to know, doesn't it provide classes for chemistry in the 27,000 dollars?
No, with this money, this money is for technology.
Chemistry will not go in technology because, see, my question is, like most of the high school, we don't provide the chemistry classes. And chemistry is so important, anybody who go to medical school or medical technology, they have to learn the chemistry.
It's designated for technology. They, when they match our funds, it's supposed to be standard technology.
Chemistry is a going technology?
No.
Next is O, consider her letter of agreement with the Advanced Kentucky to the.
Now you go, it's same thing like, they have AP calculus, AP computers, and AP chemistry. If there is no chemistry in the class, how they can have AP chemistry?
We do offer chemistry.
Well, we do have a chemistry, right? If there is no chemistry, how do we do AP?
We do offer chemistry, we have a teacher.
My question is like, if there is no chemistry, how we can do AP chemistry?
Did you hear Mr. Atkins' answer? Did you hear him? Chemistry is offered.
Mr. Brinkin, do you have chemistry?
We have chemistry.
Mr. Roberts?
Floyd Central don't have a chemistry.
We have chemistry. We hope to be able to offer AP chemistry in a couple of years.
We have been also.
Floyd Central.
We have been also emergency certifying someone in Bessie Lane that helps with the AP chemistry. Is it you, Consequera?
No, but we, we have somebody who can offer.
So Bessie Lane does offer also.
Floyd Central.
That's up to their side-based council.
That's up to their councils.
I know, I know, I know. Obviously, I know side-based council can do it, but if there is no chemistry, how can we expect our kid to medical school? I'm sorry, I have so many questions, but you also saw.
Well, and I think that one of the things too, I think that's one of the reasons why when we look at Apex and some of the, and replacing as a possible replacement to Plato, Apex has courses on there that are taught by teachers that are certified in that content area. So that's an opportunity also that I hope we don't overlook.
Yeah, we're looking, that's really, that's really the only reason AED is still in the game is because they have some technical types of classes that are offered online that we can put a talk with and then, and offer to those students, find what they can cover. But Apex, again, is, it has its advantages as well. It's a good decision. Probably though, you're going to want to respond to as well.
Next would be Y.
Y and Y because I.
Yeah, we just did that. Next is Y. It is consider an approved letter of agreement between Kentucky Science and Technology Corporation and Floyd Central High School and Floyd County Schools.
See, Y and Y is almost the same thing.
It is, it is the same thing.
Right, just different.
It's a real source.
Right, so my question is, like, so Y is, the first of my high school. The first of my high school has AP calculus, computer, and chemistry. But they have South Floyd, then Floyd Central has great science and English. So I don't understand why they have different things. If there is no chemistry here, Floyd Central has great science and English. First of all, has AP calculus, computer, and AP chemistry.
Well, some of that is based on student, what students want to take. And so we try to look at that also. With science, it's a little bit different also because teachers have certain certifications in science and they can't. in science and they can't teach classes unless they have those certifications. So we're looking at AP chemistry and adding AP chemistry, but doing that in the next couple of years.
Okay, so now my question is, uh, we decide this subject, if SPO Country decide, I think we need to sit down with the different book, how Pro Center has no chemistry. So they don't teach chemistry at all in school.
We, we don't have a say...
We don't have a say.
In what the schools teach, what they choose. That is up to their South Base Councils.
Whether we can change the policy because...
No, that is state.
So important.
That is state, that the South Base Council chooses what class, what classes that they have. And that's not, that's not our decision.
They don't have certified chemistry physics.
Right.
They don't have a teacher, we can put a teacher there.
If you can bomb them, we will. We just can't bomb them. Can't bomb them.
I'm lost. If I want my kid go read the school, I can also stop the Pro Center High School because they don't have the chemistry.
Next is KK. You, you requested KK. Consider Approve the following, this for your 2020 workers compensation, reinsurance with aggregate assist from New York Marine Insurance Company, Argent National X-Ed Buffer Insurance, credit specialty insurance, third-party administrative claims administration with alternative service concepts, and annual loss control program with career consulting groups. What questions do you have regarding that? Pardon? I can't hear you. You don't have any?
No, no, I just want, you can add the KK, I just want to pick you one, uh, how much money is...
Well, when we look at KK, we actually met with our providers on Wednesday last week, Wednesday or Thursday?
Didn't start that.
Thursday. Uh, as we go through our compensation claims, we are, we are seeing pretty big, pretty significant, uh, positive gains for us in that, in that situation because we're, we're not having that, as many cases. We are self-insured, which means we pay up to X amount of dollars. But with that being said, our cases of compensation insurance claims have, have fallen. But that allows us to save, um, and around the, I couldn't tell you the exact amount of money, but it allows us to save that, that amount of money that we have, can put back into our general fund. Because we set aside X amount of dollars to pay compensation for cases every year. So if, as we say, we're able to put that back into the general fund.
Does anybody have any more questions regarding any of the consent agenda?
We, we spending like $14,000, a good incentive is so important, probably cannot get a new two thousand, saving a lot of money.
I need a motion to approve 6A through 6Q.
I make the motion.
Junior makes the motion, I need a second. Dr. Chandler makes a second. Any opposed? Motion pass. Next is for executive session. One notice, Floyd County Board of Education pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, it's notice that the Floyd County Board of Education intends to conduct an executive session at this regular call meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters as to the superintendent evaluation. Second would be motion to conduct an executive session at this regular call meeting for the purpose of discussing personal matters as to the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
I make the motion.
I need a second? Any opposed? That motion pass, I need a second motion, I need a second. Floyd County Board of Education pursuant to KRS 61.8101F, it's notice that the Floyd County Board of Education intends to conduct an executive session at this regular call meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. I need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. Linda makes a motion, I need a second? Second by Dr. Chandler, any opposed? Motion pass. We'll go into executive session.